Good morning, everyone. It's Tuesday, April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. I am Don Swanker, Chairman of the Board. We're gonna go ahead and call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my left, I have Mike Steinis. To my right, I have Nen Flegel, Bjorn from IT, Lisa from the Auditors, Loanne in the back. We have Brittany from the press. And first up, we have via electronic technology, Jaden Sheckel from the Engineers Office. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Can you guys hear me?
Again.
Okay, perfect. First up on the agenda is entrance permits. The first one is for OTW LLC. It's a field entrance on Thirty-seventh Street, South Fork Township, Section Twenty-three. This one met all of its site distance and also did not require a colvert due to being a high point to ditch, so our department recommends approval of this one.
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve the field entrance for OTW LLC on Thirty-seventh Street of South Fork Township, Section Twenty-three. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Next is a residential entrance for Jesse Clark. It is on Four Hundredth Avenue, also known as Z Twenty, in the Fairfield Township, Section Twenty-five. This one did require a colvert, did meet all but site distance, and this one is on a paved route. And with this one having a traffic count of over four hundred vehicles per day, it does require flatter driveway four slopes, which in turn requires a longer tube. But that's all stated on the permit and the property owner is aware of that. So with meeting all the site distance and all that, we recommend approval of this one as well.
Move to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve the residential entrance permit for Jesse Clark on Four Hundredth Avenue in Fairfield Township, Section Twenty-five. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
I just wanted to make the public aware that it'll be published in the papers this week about our ordinance, the public hearing for ordinance numbers three fifteen and three sixteen for next week. And also, it is on our news and announcements on our website, the county's website homepage. There as well for people to view as they please, along with the Level B, the draft Level B resolution and map. So that way, everybody can be aware of what's going on.
Excellent.
So yeah, we hope that they looked that over and have any questions or thoughts that they come forward, so.
And there are copies available in the Auditor's Office as well. Construction projects are in full swing. They are laying asphalt as we speak on Z Thirty-four. They're doing the leveling course, which is the first lift of asphalt. And as soon as they're done with that lift, they'll go into the inner layer, which is the second lift, and then base is the third and surface is the fourth. So yeah, as long as weather holds, they'll keep on laying asphalt as fast as they can. Main and Summit Street intersection is also in full swing. They have started pavement removal and excavation, AR, what I call core out, so they can place the rock subgrade, or sorry, rock subbase prior to paving. All the utility work has been completed on that, so it's moving right along. And we also have crack sealing occurring too on our HMA roads. They were last week working on Z Twenty north of Spragueville. Yesterday, they were working on Z Thirty-four going south out of Preston to Clinton County line. And today, they are up working on D Fifty-five between Zwingle and Lamont. So a lot of stuff going on to keep our staff and myself busy.
Good. Reclaim going as planned?
Yep, they started back up yesterday and looks like we avoided rain yesterday. So I would assume they are out again as well today.
Cool. Any other questions for Jaden?
Again, as you have heard, we appreciate the help last night with the incident at the transfer station. So we appreciate the help that was there from secondary roads and the equipment, so thank them.
Will do.
Thank you very much, sir. Have a great day.
Thanks. You all as well.
Yep. All right. Next up on our agenda is visitors and citizens. Is there anybody online? There's nobody here or visitor comment, so we'll move on. I see George out in the hallway peeking every once in a while, so do we want to grab him now or?
It's a stormy season. Be around early.
Morning.
Good morning.
How we doing?
Good. We're gonna start with the letter?
Sure.
So what I did with the letter is I took out some of the wording that was talking about the landowner hitting over the property with a deed or keeping it and having us maintain it. So I think it toned it down quite a bit just by giving them information as to what their requirements are, like the fact that they are required to maintain it and it can't be destroyed. And also, the third one is, is they have to, I wanted to point out that they are required to allow access. And then, and then what the rest of the letter, what we did is offered to them to assist them in whatever way fits them. You know, we would be willing to do a workday. We would be willing to give them materials because if they want to, there's a, I understand there might be a stone that's broken in pieces. We have epoxy glue that, you know, they don't want to buy that. I've had some that I'm using for the last ten years and you know, they don't need to buy that. We could, we could provide that for them. And then also, you know, we could, if, if all they want is information on how to do it, we can give them, give them that. I didn't think it made sense to attach that to this letter because we, we, we want to, we want to work with them and let them know what they need to do. I did put in the end that we would like to visit. And so basically with this letter, I'm asking for them permission to go with them to the cemetery.
Personally, I thought it was worded to the point where, you know, you'd like to assist them or have at least chat about it. As, as far as the access, they're required with notice, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so I mean, they have to give X amount of notice, so yeah, it's not like it can just come onto the rubber.
Right. No, and in this case, and in most cases, we wouldn't go unless they're with us.
No, I think it was to the point that it was civil enough to say, hey, you know, we'd like to talk. See what we can do, what we can. I mean, if we're gonna be a beef, then we really don't lie, you know, of course, but.
No, I think this letter sounded, I like it a lot better.
Send more tone down.
Okay. And it only gave you an addressing the Schwinkers. I didn't give you the one addressing Shrew. I think the same letter would work. But again, I have the issue of he doesn't want to hear from me, so if
You can put my name on that one.
If you would, if you would do that, we can get.
If you're okay with it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
We can get a copy to you and have you sign that one.
I think it's better to come from us than county attorney or anything like that. I mean, it's a friendly reminder to say, hey, you know, we'll work something out.
You asked for his information. I don't know if you.
I did, I did not know.
Okay.
I mean, I tried, but I couldn't have any success.
I will put a, I will, I will get a letter together and get it to the land and have it available for you to send if you appreciate that.
Do you need action on that, sending them letters? Is that what we're doing?
This is discussion of possible, uh, action on access to Pioneer Cemetery.
Because I think you could just send them, right?
Okay. Yeah, if you're okay with it, I will send it one to Schwinkers and you can send the other one.
We got an audience. We got a gallery.
He's licking the window.
You've got to lick the windows now. Your home maintenance.
All right.
All right. Doing a week till later to talk about the vacancy?
Well, I mean, your section is technically done, except for the vacancy, which we can call the land up because you're on. Can we just take care of it now?
Yeah, as long as I'm here, I will.
Thank you. You might have to give her some room and a chair there. She's gonna film.
I can come over to one side.
Oh, okay.
Good morning. I'm looking for action this morning on an appointment. Was to start with the Pioneer Cemetery Commission to fill a vacancy and the term would expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. And the applicant, they have recommended is Alice Darrell.
I would move to approve.
I'd second that.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve Alice Darrell to fill a term, a vacant term on the Pioneer Cemetery Commission. And this one would expire in December thirty-first, twenty-seven.
Correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Just like that?
Thank you.
You don't have, you don't expire till the end of the year.
I think Alice will be a nice addition.
Yeah.
I don't.
Well, I talked to her the other night. Recently, we ran into each other and she seems excited. Yeah, she seems very good.
We're all done anyway.
We're all done?
We're all.
Yeah, we're done.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Good to go. Yep. Get that to the land and I'll sign that one.
Okay.
And we'll get it sent out.
I'll do that.
Have a great day.
Okay.
Enjoy the search.
Thank you, Adam.
We're ahead of schedule. We're ahead of schedule.
You want me to come back here?
Oh, here you go.
You're on the roll. Why don't you want to stop your momentum?
All right. The other business that I have this morning is a motion to make an appointment to the Board of Adjustment. We have one opening that is expiring. When vacancy, I should say the term is expiring. It's a five-year term, which would expire in May sixth of twenty thirty. And we have a list of people that have applied, so I don't know who you wanted to put in there for you.
So again, my personal feeling is we want to thank everyone for applying. Of course, we certainly appreciate their interest and willingness to serve. I would guess the Board of Adjustment is rather busy right now. And do you want to name the three applicants or was it three?
Four.
Four?
Again, yeah, if you want, I have Dave Kendall, Kelly Brown, Travis Kemp, and John Nate Manson for the four that I have.
And to reiterate, Dave has been on the board for a while. And I guess, you know, he certainly qualified and has the experience.
July seventh of twenty twenty.
I don't like removing people that's, that's been volunteering and I don't want to discourage anyone else from volunteering either. So it's a tough line when you have a good pool of candidates that are well-qualified, so. Just thoughts, conversation.
Will, I know John Manson, has he served on it before?
He was on the.
I believe he was on it before, then he went to the zoning commission and he wants to go back to the Board of Adjustment. He's resigned from the zoning commission.
Travis Kemp was one of those that applied for
The zoning commission.
The zoning commission.
Correct.
He's very impressive and Kelly Brown's involved in a lot of stuff. I do like the fact that we have some experience with John Manson and Dave Kendall, but Travis was very impressive when he came in to talk. And so I think Kelly has a wealth of knowledge as well, so. It was a bad choice, but do you go with experience or do you go with a new person or?
Well, it's nice to have new blood, like you say, once in a while, but again, experience goes a long way and willing to work with. I, I haven't had any complaints, I should say that, other than assessments are too high, but yeah.
Any other thoughts, comments, or emotions?
I guess I would like to see people fill out their forms completely. I mean.
I, I think you get it back in a different format when it's done online, though. That's the format that you get when it's filled out online, other than break them out. And I guess that was our talk process when we did all the forms online. I guess I would make a motion to appoint Dave Kendall back to the Board of Adjustment.
I would second that.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve Dave Kendall as a reappointment to the Board of Adjustment. Any other discussion? I would like to extend our thanks and appreciation to those that applied. Again, it's unusual and very nice learning to have more than one applicant to choose from, especially with the qualifications there is, they have, so we appreciate that. That being said, without any other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Could we send them some type of a letter that they apply of thanking them and encourage them to? We apply if necessary.
Well, looking at this, the next one, there's one to expire at the end of December. Let me see, it turns expire. Yeah, there's only one that expires in May the twenty-sixth, so we'll have to look at it 'cause see what we can do, but all right. Need your calendar?
Should you use a calendar? So a calendar for today, at eleven-thirty AM, is a Coqueterie River Watershed Management Authority Goal Planning Meeting by Zoom for Don. Just probably not on the calendars you have in your book. Also, on Thursday, May first and Friday, May second, I had the Isaacs Executive Retreat, Palona for Mike. He is not going to attend that, so you can cross that out. Friday, May second at three PM is the HHS Behavioral Health Tower Hall Meeting by Zoom for anybody that wants to attend that. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, May sixth at nine AM. And that day after the meeting, we will have a voting machine demonstration, new voting machines. And after that, Matt Speck has requested a work session on the revolving loan fund. He's looking for some guidance on some unusual requests that they've been receiving, so.
Doing that one next week, are we?
Well, we can put you whatever. He just asked to have.
Yeah, I just don't know with all the other stuff.
If we can do that. Well, I told him it was gonna run late if we didn't, and he was okay with that. We could go back to the thirteenth if we need to.
Up to you guys. I don't know how long the discussion that'll be. I don't know how long the voting, but the voting stuff will be. I don't know how long the public, the roads will be, you know, so. Should we push that to the thirteenth for Matt?
That's kind of with me.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Cool.
So ahead.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
You said, oh no, actually, Stormy.
Good.
Yep.
All right.
Morning. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Good. Let's update a little bit. This one, I'm not sure if I talked about last time, but just the total numbers that we have for CPR for the courthouse. We ended up with sixteen individuals that took advantage on those courses at the courthouse and we had nine out of Hurstville. So talking Becky, I think, just so everyone can plan ahead, we're gonna try within the first couple of weeks of January every year. We'll just, we'll have classes on books. That way we can kind of have that regularly scheduled out. What came out of that was the Veterans Affairs ladies over there stated that we didn't have AED in Penrils, which we don't. So I did talk to Jen and we got a grant for AED there. And I also had it put in for two, so we have the same identical one here. So we'll replace the one in the courthouse and then we can repurpose that one at a different location. So those are the works we're approved for. It's just on order right now, I guess.
On training for them also?
They're pretty self-explanatory. What I planned on doing is putting out a email cheat sheet out and then having the time where I would be over here that if someone wants to, you know, run through it, I'll have a trainer there and they can physically get some hands on hold it. Yep.
I think that's always good, hands-on stuff, and you can, you know how things transpire when something is happening, everybody's a little excited and I, I such that redirections went well.
Yeah, and what's nice about the newer AEDs that we're getting is there's no adult pads and child pads. It's all one and there's a button to push if you're going from adult to child, so a little less upkeep on it, so. And that's gonna be similar to what, I know city cops are. I'm not sure exactly what the county are running for type of AED, but they're usually all kind of similar, so. More to come on that. EMT class finished up. We finished up with eight students. I had two students text me today that they took their certification test and passed. So one of them being our bailiff for a security guy down there, Andy. So more to come. Those are scheduled on their own, so they're gonna be sporadic out through the next couple of months when people are testing. With that, I'm finishing up the requirements for our Region Five Grant. So we always put it in for our initial education reimbursement. So those students that did pass, I get all that documentation submitted and then we get, our county services get reimbursed for that tuition, so. Hopefully, there's some funds left over. Last year, we were able to get a virtual reality simulator for continuing education that we, six grand that we utilized funds for. So we'll allocate, each county's allocate about eighty-two, eighty-four hundred. And then if other counties don't use the full amount, this can come back as first come, first served, so. Some kind of cool news out of Preston and mine, so they're both looking at, we're working on changing their protocols, adding procedures that they weren't approved to do or medications that they weren't approved to give, such as EMTs can do albuterol nebulizer treatments and they weren't up doing them. Some advanced drugs that, such as a cardiac epi that Preston wasn't given. So we're redoing the protocols, making those available to them, just getting the paperwork done and getting the and getting the the agreements in place with the pharmacy so they can order those drugs. Also working with a service that, their service director is retiring, so the service director is personless in charge of their EMT system. So we'll be working on a transition period to whoever they elect. I'm not gonna, I don't know if it's public, if you want it public yet, but.
So all the outlying departments and services you have, I mean, you keep in pretty close contact with them as far as their system standards is always unheard of.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what.
Certifications.
Yep. So I took a, so they have a service director workshop that you gotta take every three years. I'm not the service director of anyone, but I take it just so I can kind of know what's going on and what they're getting, so. System standards is part of what that kind of transition with that new service director kind of, you know, they're in charge of it, but I'm, my position is helping out with that, right? So one of our projects that we're gonna be working on this year is kind of automate some of those busy worker, things that they're doing handout like report audits. So instead of looking up how many times we gave this particular drug, we're gonna set it up that the system automatically pulls out information and try to make that county-wide and kind of make it easier for our services.
Anything you can streamline for them, departments, and again, I can't stress enough, the volunteer people.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, they're there when they got time and when leaving their jobs, if so be it, and their families. So whatever we can do to streamline that operation.
What we want to do is let them concentrate on training and calls and not have to worry about the outside things. So if we can do that, yeah, that's, that's working. And why do something for Preston that, you know, Belby's doing this, Lamont's doing this, we can all kind of get together and do it, do it the same? Makes it even easier. And that's kind of what the state of mind was pushing right now, too. So it sounds like we're not the only people that are going, kind of going this route that we're doing, so in the state.
We're getting a little more modern technology working.
That's nice, right? Yeah, so that's, that's our summer projects that we have going on and we got a association meeting coming up on the twenty-eighth of May in Preston. So and Loanne has that on her calendars. She has her yearly out there, so.
Good. Any other questions for? Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Michael.
Yep.
It's Lisa.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five board proceedings as written by Audrey Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Hold on.
One second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike to approve the minutes of the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve invoices for five hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-four cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, two thousand dollars to Bill Bruce Builders, one hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars to Stronghold Industries, one thousand dollars to Kraus Plumbing and Heating, one thousand dollars to Geese for Brother Company, one thousand dollars to Rock River Electric Inc., one thousand dollars to Midwest Oil, Fire and Sprinkler, sixty-two dollars and twenty-six cents to McCokin Lumber and four hundred and twenty dollars to AT Disposal for a total of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents and authorize the chair signature on the final project cost recap for the Law Enforcement Center for Invoices and Work Completed as of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So John doesn't have to come back for this or he just, just gone?
He's gone.
Good, okay.
So I guess I like the word final in there, but I also am a little concerned, you know, especially with stronghold. It seems like some of our warranty claims are not yet addressed on a timely manner. Now, I, I know the chain of command is to go here, to go there and get it done. Seems a little monotonous. I don't know. I, I don't like the idea of holding back either, but.
Because last we were told all warranty work has to go through John.
Correct.
So is he, we paid, is he in effect no longer project manager and?
I would think he would be project manager until all the warranty.
I would say he'd have to cover his warranty time. I mean, what his invoice is pretty minimal to what some of these other ones are where we're having issues. It seems like when I read warranty issues that stronghold is a major player in some of these warranty issues and.
I don't know at what point the bond gets released either. I guess that would be my other question. Then I don't know.
I mean, obviously, we got a pair of bills, I mean, on a timely manner.
Yeah.
But again, if we're gonna have, I guess, I don't know, but it'd be.
Is there a timeline we have to do this? That's why it's on here? I figured there would be one more. John comes in and says, okay, we're done. This is it, you know? Or is this just trying to clean up the book right now?
I think everybody wants their money and to, you know, move on. That was my understanding in visiting with John.
I can, I can see that point. And do, going forward, if we have issues with warranty that are not getting addressed, is that a legal matter for us then or is it?
I mean, I don't know at what point, like I said again, what point. I mean, I don't know at what point, like I said again, what point does the bond stop? You know, because all of them.
Do the bond?
Yeah, I don't know at what point is the bond released or has it been done?
Yeah, so that's a good point, you know, so they bonded and they're responsible for, I mean, we could use the bond money if that's the case, but.
Right, but I don't know if John's, I mean, do we have to release the bond, does John release the bond because there's been no paperwork?
So, is that something that needs to be answered before we do this?
I, I, uh, that.
You, you know what, I mean, we don't pay till next week, so, I mean, if you choose to, if you choose to, to approve this, they would be in next week's claim.
Claims.
Or.
So it'd be a week from Friday.
I mean, I can remove this also and we can deal with it later. I mean, I don't think it has to be done today. I mean, no offense, we opened up in November.
Yeah, so again, I, I would question maybe even maintenance to the point to say, hey, are you satisfied with the way things are getting done here when you file a claim, I know we've had several emails to say, hey, I have an error from this guy and I'm trying to touch base with you directly and.
Cause I know there's some discussion whether that's a Bruce Builder thing, is that a stronghold thing, is that a, you know, back and forth, um.
And you know what? Once you kick the can long enough, then nobody responds, you get tired of it, and say, just take care of yourself, well, I don't like that idea. I mean, if we got a door cylinder leaking for and it don't work, and it never did work, well, that's a problem.
Um, I, I'm, I'm more than happy to resend my, my, my request.
I think it, uh, just personal opinion again, I think it's a good idea just to maybe get to the bond thing answered, if you can make a call and find out from John and maybe talk to Jeff and see what he thinks about squaring up here and be done, I, I don't know, he's over there fairly often.
Which if we wait another cycle, we're still gonna be within this year budget.
Yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you approve next Tuesday, you're paying till Friday.
Yeah, I was gonna say it'd be three weeks before.
Well, they would have to be in to be processed by next Tuesday.
No.
To go for next, he's saying we don't pay till next Friday.
Well, but I'm saying we approve, we would have to approve claims next Tuesday, May sixth, then we, they're actually sent on the ninth, um, then the next week is a payroll week, so we wouldn't pay, I wouldn't get it approved till the twentieth and get paid on the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, they waited six months already.
Well, I guess those are the questions, you know, the bond question.
I think that's a legit question for sure, yeah.
Jeff, question and warranty work, I mean, if we make these final payments, are they free and clear, I mean, is John free and clear? I mean, John's been pretty much incommunicado, other than email. You know, maybe an occasional phone call with Jeff.
I talked to John last week, yeah.
I mean, I like the idea of make sure that we're secure either with a bond yet or or if they, like you said, or they go bye-bye and we don't have no recourse anymore. Could be a legal question, too.
Did we do anything with that, or?
We'll just take it off the table.
Thank you.
Alright.
So, um, I need a motion to approve resolution eleven fourteen dash zero four dash twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-five for an operating transfer from the Rural Services eleven thousand fund to the Secondary Roads Fund twenty thousand for six hundred and seventy-five thousand effective April twenty ninth, twenty twenty-five. And that's just the other half of our budgeted.
Normal transfer.
It is, yep.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to approve resolution eleven fourteen dash oh four dash twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-five for an operating transfer from Rural Services Fund, eleven thousand to Secondary Roads Fund, twenty thousand for the amount of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars effective April twenty nine, twenty twenty-five. Any other discussion?
Is this normal timeframe of the year in April or?
Kind of do it whenever, I mean.
Yeah.
Yep, and actually, they need the money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that means work's getting done, though, so.
Yeah, so that's why, I mean, it has to be done before the end of the year, it's obvious that they need the money right now, they've been getting projects done, so, yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve resolution eleven fifteen dash zero four dash twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-five for an operating transfer from the General Fund oh one thousand to the Capital Improvement Courthouse Fund, thirty-three thousand and one for fifty thousand dollars effective April twenty ninth, twenty twenty-five. And it is our understanding that this was the board's wishes is to get this money transferred into the Capital Improvement Fund for any future improvement for capital improvement for future expenses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike, to approve resolution eleven fifteen dash oh four dash twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-five for operating transfer from General Fund, one thousand to, um, Capital Improvement Courthouse Fund, thirty-three thousand and one for fifty thousand dollars effective April twenty nine, twenty twenty-five. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Well, I have the board today.
Alright.
Thank you.
Um, Boards and Commissions, I think is what we're down to. And anybody have anything from the Boards or Commissions, anyone update the?
Um, early childhood, they're going, as we've talked about, the same regional maps that everything else is going to, but it sounds like on Monday, they got notified that this might get pushed back until July one of twenty twenty-six instead of July one of twenty twenty-five. But now the big issue is they haven't really gotten any notifications on budgeting. So, all the counties that had to certify their budget.
Well, the state's supposed to have their budget done on Friday, it sounds like they ain't gonna, so.
So, now they're working on that because they don't even know how much money they're gonna get for next year, yeah. So, they were supposed to be putting some calls out to see what the what they're supposed to be doing, so.
We had a municipal league meeting, uh, Wednesday, and, um, again, it was we had reports from most of the cities that were there, weren't the cities that were there, anyway, were represented. And everything seems to be, uh, going fairly smooth and working direct with them, so, yeah, they're, they're appreciative of their TCP money, of course, and that is coming up soon, um, for voting or for press approval, so. Um, they're working on that and, uh, no major issue with Crime Stoppers and no, it was actually a good meeting, fairly very calm.
No, um, I met with Josh Bull to talk about a few things yesterday and I see, uh, we're probably gonna have to set up a work session just for us to kind of formulate how our plan of attack would be, um, if we decide to do things or something, so that's something we're gonna have to work in the next, the next few weeks is to kind of figure out if things are gonna happen, how we're gonna say they happen in our direction, so that's something coming down the pipe, so. Anything else for the board?
Yes, I would just like to thank all the fire services that responded and helped each other out in the community.
It was kind of an all hands on deck, even Baldwin was out there, my, my son-in-law got to go on his first fire call, he was filling a bumper, he thought he was all cool, so, uh.
Uh, there was a good response, I mean, they had Preston, they had McCokka, they had Lamont, they had Key West responding. Happened to get another call, Bellevue did, uh, north on fifty-two for a structural fire, so Key West responded to Bellevue's fire and, uh, they got called back, yeah. So, it was a good response from, I mean, actually, it was pretty impressive to stand there and when the call come out for Bellevue, there was like three different units, Lamont, Preston, and Bellevue packing up and moving to north of Bellevue, so it was, uh, pretty impressive.
That's one thing that you, as, as, as adversity kind of rears its head, it's amazing how uh, this community comes together and takes care of business, so. It is a wonderful thing to see, unfortunate as it was with timing and circumstances, but it's nice to see how everybody's willing to step up and and do what they need to do to get things done, and now we gotta clean up the mess and figure out where we go from here, so. Alright.
Um, no other residents, so to make a motion, we adjourn.
I'd second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to adjourn, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, have a great day, everybody.